Mr. President, Secretary of State, Mr. Secretary of Justice, Councilmember of the House, President of the Senate, Councilmember of the House, President of the Senate, Councilmember of the House, Attorney, here. 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 Councilperson, here. Here, Mr. President, Secretary. At this time, we have the lead of flag, 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 to begin. Please go stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the citizens of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This is especially of the city council of the city of Elizabethan Beach as the official order, I call American control. Notice that Elizabethan Beach has been prompted by the City Hall Book of Law reserved for a search councilman, and is a file on the City Court, the ABC Board Secretary, Room 106. City Hall Elizabethan Church can mail to me a person upon request. A copy of this notice was sent for publication to be. At this time, we have a public speaking, any resident, taxpayer, who would like to step forward to speak on any matter concerning ABC affair, please step forward, state your name, and add this to the record. Once again, any resident, taxpayer, who would like to present the council on any matter concerning ABC matters, please step forward, state your name, and add this to the record. Stand up, and add this to your name. First order from business district here for TS Entertainment, LLC, as an entity named Niger. At this time, I will turn this over to attorney, but before we start, I want to ask the secretary, does he have any special condition available for us? Have you had that?
Mr. Chairman, the conditions place upon the license on January 2017, 2009, and those other laws are remaining in effect, and I can't get it from the members.
Which is what? Yes, yes, absolutely.
For right, 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 we're going to go on. Appealing to the GMS Entertainment, LLC, as an entity named Niger. Top of the line is Julius Montulli, who is the managing member of the LLC.
Members of the ABC Board, I have fought for this in the law, and reached an agreement with two charges. The licensing plea did not fall to charge five and to charge seven. Many charges will be dismissed. Charge five made in first offense, for one vice supremacist, which is 30 days suspension. And charge seven, which would be a second offense, would be a 60 day suspension for a total of 90 days. Cause of entry did not fall, plea gets credit for 20%, which is 18 days, which brings the suspension down to 72 days. Proposed immediately licensing close for seven days, and the remaining 65 days will be held in the bank for six months. Is that clear, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And licensing is also requested at the cause of contraption limits, they'd be allowed to close last year in July, Sunday, July 25th through Saturday, 1st of July. Is that okay?
Sorry, sir. Members of the City Council, you heard the charges, and you heard the government, the plea mark was made, and also the notification that the Entertainment LLC has agreed to any comments or concern, question, email. Understand?
I have a question. What happens since 65 days, 70 days?
They held the days for 65, for six months, there's no further offenses that are apparent convictions, and that does tie them with.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Try and clarify, convictions or charges?
They're the convictions.
Okay, counsel, counsel, members of the House?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. He said 65 days for the non-compete, and there's no further incidents, is that what you're saying, incidents?
No, it would have to be conviction, because in order for it to be a third offense, it would have to be a conviction.
So they had taken it forward, like, with this whole?
Oh, yeah, they had.
Copy for us?
Correct.
Okay, but do we, are we to be convinced here? Because I'm getting confused with the word conviction.
Well, we have here charges from the immediate plea, or a trial orders and termination appeals on the charges.
Okay, because, I don't know, I guess my process is saying that, say, next week, there's an incident.
Correct.
And then, five months, or say eight months, that was a while for the incident to be brought before this board. Am I not correct? Like, for example, some of these incidents happened in December 2012, and here is April 2013. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to process.
Well, the reason why I have convictions was, is charge that we can't sustain, is fair to say that we have still been convicted of guilty regrets.
Okay, so right now, you're pleading guilty to all of these offenses?
No, it's charge, like, plea guilty, non-all, the fees of charge five and charge seven.
The charge five and charge seven, and the remaining incidents of one, two, three, four, and six will be dismissed. Because of line of evidence, or?
Yes, I have opportunity to speak with the police officer, who had the reports, and only we were given this statement, sir.
Okay, so ready, I'm sustaining in six and seven?
Five, five, sir.
Five and seven?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, counsel, please.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
My, 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 my. Turn to the microphone. With counsel and secretary, it's something for me, and that is, that after six months, those remaining days are wiped clean.
They don't have concern for that.
However, the question is, between now and six months, is it a matter of the incident?
Yes, incident has occurred in this situation.
Not a conviction?
Correct.
That's what the council was saying.
Yes, yes, it's the incident that occurs in six months.
Thank you?
Yes.
Thank that, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
That's, that's right, I can't.
Yeah, we have to be convinced of the incident that occurs in six months.
It has to be incident that occurred in six months.
Yes, yes.
Counselor, has? Yeah, Mr. President, and the issue, we should be able to, the CDC should be able to clarify, for instance, all the charges that we actually dismissed, only two, what actually opposed against. In every form, in every establishment, City Hall is among the way to go, but I hope that many bars to make sure that we get to see what happened. And we get a lot of evidence that there's fights, and there's problems, broken windows, and we don't get our rewards. So, there is two situations. Number one, it could be in any bar, someone in a church, people go inside the church, and steal money, and call the people, for the poor people. Now, can you imagine an establishment where there's, let's say, 300, 400 people, and there is a 20% security people hired by the establishment? Maybe you might have five, eight bars, or probably so much higher, because of the crowd, or the control, or whatever. And then, because of a bad happen, or somebody, I want to punish my daughter or my wife, something about security takes me out, or closes me out, and the police is outside, and that goes again, they might have a personal, and Rico was a veteran against the establishment of John Smith. This is, it would be wrong to put a charge against the establishment. Did we check out the microw, we have the police to protect and serve us, and those are people that are, that's Elizabethan Beach, Elizabethan Elizabethan? Yes, we can say that, right in second floor. The same thing, we are charged, and I don't have any more. Even City Hall, even the fourth, while you pay the bills, somebody is not making noise for bums in the bank, and then pushing each other into a fight. Do you shut down City Hall, because of supply, not because of success, or you pay the tax office? Or you pick up a former ABC, and you shut against somebody else, and supply them, you shut ABC? Those are things I need to be looking to, Mr. President, and Mrs. DePaolo. We understand, we did this, something similar to this to other establishments, okay? Which they would deserve to be shut down forever, but this particular question, take out this making money, this is coming to Elizabethan Beach. You know, and invest money, or lose, and maybe are sitting, you know, a little beautiful. There's always something, like I said, if it happens, it has to, it's gonna look like it happened. But we also have to be fair, right? I think, and sure, the council, we are fair, and, you know, in Jorani, you have to start doing it for a month until six months, I think that's the amount of days, until whatever. You know, matter of fact, if you agree on calls early, it's a freedom, it's free, by shutdown, one, five, or whatever, whatever you want to do, throughout this, because let me tell you, there's always the man, that's on, and that mustn't close your damn, and they just have the honor, just to create a chaos, and when this happens, they do will be shut down, when they was deserve, when they was supplied, was alive. And this is how it was going on, Elizabethan Beach.
I go along with the recommendation that the attorney went home, and the applicants attorney, of course, are ABC director charged.
Mr. President?
May I finish, please?
I have a favor to ask.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, I am, I am in favor to go along with the recommendation, but anything more than that, I will give my attention.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor, and then, counsel, the president, I can't believe.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm glad we agree, but, again, as the president, this is about, I guess, this is about due diligence on our part, on the board's part, all of these charges, and maybe we did receive the police reports for all set of charges, but I don't recall, and I think we talk about having all the information, so that we can fairly and justly conduct our business as the city leaders. So, I don't know if there were police reports here, and I don't know if there were police reports taken, I don't know if someone from the police department can come over here, because I walked into the meeting late, and I do apologize for all the people to use them, and use them, but I don't know if we heard from our police department, because I just like to have all the information. We have many women who wear uniforms to protect this entire city, and when situations happen at these establishments, their lives are put in danger. We also, the video, where the cop had to punch a woman in her face, that's because his life was in jeopardy, they tried to, like, attack him, but he is a trained officer, and instead of taking out his weapon, he uses fist to combat situation. So, you know, I just want us to be, to do our diligence. I love these establishments, I've been there, and I've been here, and we have our control every patron that walk in and out of these establishments, but we also need to do our diligence. So, again, Mr. President, we, we don't have, we don't even have a police people, I mean, what, how can you dismiss something, when we don't have anything in front of us to dismiss?
Of course.
So, I don't know, I just don't know. So, we have our men running here from the police department, and they're trying to keep law and order in this city, very huge diversity, and we want all types of entertainment, all types of establishments, we want everyone to do well and be successful, we want people to come here, have a nice time, and go back to their respective homes, we don't want all of that. But nothing against a blind eye to situations that happen, we need all the information. This is like the third ABC meeting that I've brought to this year, we, we just don't have all the information, so I, you know, that's all I'm gonna say, it's nothing against the gentleman that's here, it's nothing against this establishment, I'm talking about what we need to do as a body.
Okay, I'll go here for counsel, for, 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 for. Counselor, counsel, question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, in 99, this is large, many times, altered us, I can't remember mine, but I do get around, and I have to tell you, this particular place, I'm impressed with the fact that in this particular place, I'm convinced that you have more security partners than any other background, and I'm convinced that you have more police officers. So, you all know my feelings, my beliefs about what happens in an establishment, and all of a sudden, the applicant is subjected to, to this type of behavior, to an accusation. So, I am satisfied with the agreement, and I'm happy on the reading of the speech. Obviously, the applicant knows, you know, he has to be careful, and be aware of, you know, people who attend this location, and I think he is, I think he'd be very deliberate. The point I'm making, it's misunderstanding, is that sometimes, you might not be deliberate to argue, some of these things are happening, and it's not because the applicant didn't know. So, like the councilwoman, I have had the pleasure of visiting this place several times, always very good time, never a problem, so I am satisfied with the agreement, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
I just want to share full support agreement that was mentioned before. In seeing this, I know there were seven charges altogether that was placed, a concern, and this is something I voiced in the past as well, it's just that, I really think that we need to revisit the criteria of what is an incident in these establishments, because one of the fears that I have personally, is that a lot of owners, you know, they'll think twice before calling place, or, you know, like, taking those extra measures, simply because they're afraid to get a charge, and at the same time, too, sometimes, certain incidents can be small incidents, but yet, it can really hurt a business and close them down compared to something that might be bigger. I think personally, as a board member here, and also how my colleague, Councilman, which is Perkins' bench, we definitely need more information, and also, personally, we would love to know what is the grid on establishing, what is an incident, like, you know, more detail, like, how to be determined, what is the criteria of the instance of, that they would put on a certain establishment? Thank you.
Mr. President, before we, Mr. President, can I just ask a question? I just got a question, I don't know, Rocco, if this is something I can ask, and, one of the conditions on this license was that there would be no outside promoter. My question, if there is, if I can get the answer to this, if not, it's available. We have seven incidents of roles, did any of these involve a situation where there was an outside promoter in this construction?
Not that I, not that I approve, that's why he was charged.
Why can't we have someone?
Counselor? Okay, I'll be brief, and then, when I pass Rocco, he kind of clears a lot of information. Our police officers serving are here to protect them, and they serve, and I think he does a fine job of doing that, but it's kind of hard, I don't want my colleagues to mention about fights in City Hall, and being here there, but we also try to do a gun control throughout the country, and in much that we have, by, run by, in various cities and towns, you always gonna find someone that will have a gun and fight against someone. How, how did it happen? Very easy, people just don't play it off, every gun, they own it. So, how can we so prohibit and stop a fight from occurring? They can't do it everywhere, so I mean, they're there in outside establishment, and trying to do a job, but they're not going to stop prohibiting every fight that occur in the establishment, no matter how, they're not going to do something there, because when, when you start a certain alcohol, and people can't control themselves, that's when these things happen. But I'm satisfied with the plea mark that had been written here, but we have to have someone to go by and lie on, to make sure that the owners understand that we are not a company, stand by and allow incidents such as this occur, and there's nothing done about it. And I think this is well within the range of what they have agreed to here tonight, and I'm willing to vote for this. Now, of course, the council needs to mount the reports, I'm gonna allow the attorney to intervene and break up the speed on the reports, because I didn't speak with him tonight about the reports, that we used to have here, ever since I've been in the council. Counselor, you make the reports, if yes, you used to have, and I spoke to the attorney.
But do the police department, do they have any reports on them? I can ask somebody to come up and speak.
This is different, I'm gonna hold out a lot of the attorney, I'm gonna follow, break up the speed on that, after it comes in, and I guess, it's even about the reports that we have, what you spoke, okay, counsel?
But again, you have the police department here, gonna come up and speak for the sentence regarding this issue, they're the ones for the processing agents for incidents and reports, not the law department, they are.
He's a lawyer, and?
Yeah, but as, as a pastor, I'm asking that you have them later, this company has to come up and give the report, we do it all the time, it's not out of the ordinary.
Let, let it go, let it go.
Okay, I appreciate it, Mr. President, thank you.
I think it's approached about providing the council people with reports part of hearing, and as I explained, the councilman, there's a legal theory for fundamental fairness, where you as a charter, in fact, do not prejudge a case based on your reading of the reports or the number of events, and what this would mean to it. So, if you were given reports of best, wasn't with my knowledge or authority, and say yes, and you can have, or say no, you're not supposed to have the reports, you're supposed to judge the information that's presented to you. In these cases here, after speaking to the police, after reading the reports, and speaking to the police officers, I thought, oh, I can sustain two of these charges, and that's why you're disagreeing. These are, there's fights on the licensing, on the security, bars, bars, there's a very big place, and there's a condition on the license, specifically says that you have 400 people here, or the police ahead of time, and the fire department, so you can make sure that there's no overcrowding. These were large moves, cops couldn't tell the exact, police officers couldn't tell the exact, how many people were in there, but it was clear that, I would imagine, so that is why the proceeding was to charge. You have to be clear that my job would be to present the testimony, and then Mr. Allo would have the opportunity to cross-examine, present his own testimony. If you look at those reports ahead of time, you're not getting the full story, you're only getting the official version of it, and there might be reasons that it differs a little bit, so that's why you don't get the reports ahead of time.
Mr. DePaolo?
Yes, sir.
I respect everything he said, because I respect you, but, Mr. DePaolo, this is my 21st year as city, as councilwoman and mayor of the city, and in the past, Mr. DePaolo, we have always received the reports. Now, if you don't want to give us two minutes, at least, Mr. DePaolo, we can have them at tonight's hearing. Mr. DePaolo, awesome. Police Department, always, we always have someone, sorry, we always have someone to come, and it's giving their assessment, because if we took all the order, then what are we here for, Mr. DePaolo? Seriously. I mean, the people of that does, to govern the city, to make our decisions for the city, and we simply just want, it's just a matter of protocol, we simply want you to use the proper passes to say regarding these issues. I mean, it's a set of issues, and we incidents, now, the police department isn't okay, there's two of them, they're on, I don't define, I mean, what is the problem? We always, always, Mr. DePaolo, had a little police department come up and speak for the ABC Board, and I don't know what we do in the 21st century, Mr. DePaolo, I really don't know.
Well, that's true.
And, 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 Mr. DePaolo, I still want the representation from the police department to come on and speak for us tonight on the session, because you cannot take that right away from the city government and body, when we ask for someone to come up and speak for us, Mr. DePaolo.
I'm not trying to take anything away from you as a charter, in fact, City Council, but that's why it's legal, it's to work out the charges. Yes, there should be a police officer that will address it, and we have our ABC police officer, Paul Passam, out here, who, you know, let you know what's been happening since the events, but it's part of the legal, you don't get to listen to all the officers present your testimony.
And we don't have to listen to all the officers, okay? We listen to the designated police personnel assigned to the ABC, that's all.
That's all, I'm got you.
Yeah, but you have officers there who expend their time, taxpayers' money, and they just sit here.
Well, they were brought here in preparation to try, we worked out a agreement, so.
That's fine, but we still listen to the police officers who have been designated to work with the ABC close, I mean, that's it, that's all I'm asking.
And there's Paul Passam, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Paul Passam. Go ahead, ask me, now, speak, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm familiar with this establishment.
I am.
Okay, what is your assessment of this establishment? Are you familiar with the seven counts, these seven incidents, seven heard?
Yes, I'm very familiar with seven charges, my charges, I'm the one who actually signed the administrative charge against the establishment, so I'm familiar with it. I'm familiar with all the wars, and, of course, could be each and every charge itself. In my opinion, I believe that there should be more than just two, I'm not saying all seven, Mr. DePaolo, I discussed that there were a couple that were thin, as far as it's written in the report, but we can't prove. So, I do agree that some aren't, you know, some, the charges, as it's written in the actual administrative charge, would be difficult to prove. So, that being said, I do agree that what possibly most of that would have happened here is, or happened in these past seven instances, when the establishment itself, there was numerous fights, and a lot of violence, renders the road, road should be completely impassable to traffic, I've gotten complaints from every police officer, from deputy chief, from down to patrol, to complain about this, and it's not on part of your own particular place, but it's because of that, I take attention to it. And as these reports are written, every Monday, every night, every week end, which is our hot, hot time, it's just seeming, it does seem like they were. It's just seeming, it does seem like there were numerous reports coming from this establishment at, you know, like two weeks. As you look, you can see that there's a lot of these that are very close together. Seems we just draw bricks and cameras back if we make them all come in. And when you look back and you say, okay, well, this is December. Okay, as it turns out. And that's why I think it took a little while for them to come through. Because we do try to prevent it now. We don't want to hurt the business. And that's not what we want to do here. But I think what you want to know is can we prove each and every single one of these? I think we have to speak to Mr. DePaolo and I respect his decisions. I think that some of them are a little bit difficult to prove, I respect. By that is, there is a fight. And it does happen. And the security staff that is hired by the establishment takes care of most of the fight. One of the guys outside, I mean, the police department's problem. And when the police department guys get there, maybe three, four minutes after, and the fight is not there. So our officers are not going to be able to say, yes, I served a fight. But it's presumptuous, obvious that some sort of incident occurred, a fight happened, numerous police officers are called to the scene. And that's, and that's what this is about.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I can answer any questions.
I'm very glad to address the case, President. I'd really like to discuss the section, Mr. Powell's role in this. We had established in trial, we've gotten all of the documents and all of the testimony. And we, as members of the ABC, made, would have made a decision to go to Hainan, to some. That Mr. Powell's position allows to prosecute in court where, on the basis of his role as our attorney, and also on the basis of his experience, that he's in a position to gauge what would be an acceptable plea deal that would be in use from the city of Elizabeth and also the owner. And since I've got city councils, Powell's been doing that, and wonderful man. To me, he's really good at that. So this distinction between going to the trial, at which point you must have all of the information, and allowing Mr. Powell to, or with the police department and with the owner, to come up with a potential plea deal, if that makes sense. And in this case, it's fine with it, and it certainly does make sense. So I understand Counselor's frustration not having all of the information. But conversely, I think that the role that Mr. Powell plays is a truly important one, I think, as a president.
I'm not frustrated. Can you characterize my imperatives as any frustration? Thank you, Mr. President. But I never, I would never characterize any new gentleman such as I'm to characterize. I don't want to characterize me. And, Mr. President, as I say, I would never characterize any new gentleman as sitting on his board or his council. Such as, not to characterize, when I'm trying to protect and build a people, our police officers in the city. And I've never characterized any of them.
I stand by my remarks regarding Mr. Powell and his professional role.
Counselor, ask.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm going to call. Do you mind if I ask you a question? I know you're a super job. I'm really very proud of you for your job. Can you comment briefly between the, what is the staff and the within the perimeter of my area, as a 200 feet, I mean, of this night call establishment, maybe?
I don't know how many there are, but I think, I don't think there are too many. There are several other establishments that are in the area. On many, of course, a couple of these incidents, the, I know they are happening at this particular incident based on what I have from the patrol officers and speaking to the supervisors out there. I know it's not coming from Club Show or from Canelas or from Coca-Cola or any of the other clubs. I know for a fact it's coming from this well, and that's why I signed the, if you're sure of charge, I guess this well. None of the other ones, it's not coming from anywhere else here.
I do respect that you did that. And I was one evening riding the area. I actually witnessed a phenomenal commander, young people, compared to my age, very young. Walking out towards the local department, the office office, and being further out, passing this establishment of Jorani, sorry. And, and to me, they were, they weren't touchy. They were chatty. But then before one place, then they go to other establishments, they say, hey, they're in there now, and something might have happened. Or if a driver from my car gets a fletch, I might go, you know, I have a fletch, I can get assistance. I might go to the police department to go for assistance. So that was a particular establishment. Or there is an accident, I'm calling for an ambulance. As in, I'm obeying, you're calling for an ambulance. And that was also a rare, there's a lot of rare backplaces. Even the incident on this one, on small, second split, where people came across from the old social security office, right into the property of Mrs. Colucci or whatever. I go all the way exactly. I made a recommendation of both the local department, whatever they did with the attorney and the applicant. But I also want you to know that, Mr. Chairman, I've been almost 20 years as a councilman, seeing any police strikers or whatever. It was only a condition, was this condition, whether by law or by the attorney. And whatever I'm, whatever I'm reading, I'm making an idea. If I'm not to prove to what I don't understand, unless the attorney or it's the ABC or even the president on the board to find out what actually is happening. But the main thing is, we are here, like we said before, to serve our people. Whether there's a body establishment, whether there's a drug store, whether there's a candy store here to serve, or a police officer, as we say, to protect and serve, maybe doing a super job, I'm ready to answer him for you, he's there. But whatever we come on tonight, it's something that we have to do it. If a person is guilty, doesn't take care of his premises, similarly, he or she will come begging for his support. And that's when you use the fledgehammer. There's always a time that you're climbing as a listener. It's a better way to do it. And there's a second time where you say, well, guess what? If you can change the first time, the second time, we have to really hit you good the third time, which will license you to take it away. And that's what I'm saying. If the child listens to the word according to standard statistical, I do see. I'm sure you have to go back there again and take care of our whole community. Mr. President.
Mr. President. Mr. President. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm a passenger.
Mr. President, thank you, Pastor. Mr. President, if the council on the sixth floor is prepared to make a motion, I will support second motion. And that will make motion myself.
Before you do that, I just want to make one comment. Mr. President, I have no problem with the ability of our attorney to negotiate pleas. It happens in court. And we are city cares of trial, in fact. Mild concern is that the officer stated that this establishment on dismissal time, I use the word like in school. But there's a lot of congregations and there's potential for fights. There has to be some different, better different made by the establishment to not have seven fights in three months. If this is going on in other locations, then we would probably get the same things before us. And what ends up happening with these fights, as Counselor mentioned before, you get U2, you get these tapes. And officers look like bad guys. When in the reality is, you have 200 people coming out of establishment, half intoxicated, looking to confront with beer muscles, as they say, everybody and their brother, officers are putting pictures. So I don't have a problem with today's plea that's been negotiated. But I'm going to ask Mrs. Colucci that this not happen again, because clearly, seven in three months, that's a lot. That's a lot. So whether you're having outside promoters that are causing this kind of ruckus, whether you need more security guards, whatever you need to do, correct. Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. President, just one last time. I just need to say that Mrs. Colucci is a good businessman. I know when he first opened up this establishment many years ago, he invested a lot. And this is not to take away from his business or managing skills. But we just need to do our diligence as a board. And that's why I'm going to continue to say, Mr. President, until we as a board continue to do our diligence. And that's all I'm going to say. He's an excellent businessman. He does a fine job. I've been in this establishment on many occasions. In the afternoon, in the evening, at night, I've been there for parties and events. So I know the caliber of an establishment and of a person we have before us. But we must continue to do our diligence to make sure that we're being fair across the board when we look at all of these issues. And that's all I want to direct everybody.
Thank you, Counselor. At this time, I have a motion for this, Mr. President, make a motion to go on with the recommendation set by the local department. Second motion. Motion by Counselor Nata, say, Counselor Wester, pro quo.
Counselor member, a large break, Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Counselor member, a large question.
Aye.
Counselor member, a large vote.
Aye.
Counselor member, a glory.
Aye.
Counselor member, a king.
Aye.
Counselor member, a day.
Aye.
Counselor member, a matter.
Aye.
Counselor, President, all.
Aye, with the ayes.